I'm going to call the May 28, 2024 regular meeting of the Town Board to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz. Councilmember De La Rata.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Here.
All right, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as.
We wish to respectfully acknowledge that Niskiuna is on the traditional lands of the Mohicanak and the Kanikihaka peoples, past and present, and we honor with gratitude the land itself and the peoples who have stewarded this land throughout generations.
Okay, moving on to approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the April 16, 2024 special meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes from the April 16, 2024 special meeting.
Thank you, do I have a second? Is there any discussion, any changes to those meeting minutes? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. May I have a motion to approve the May 14, 2024 special meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from the May 14, 2024 special meeting.
Thank you, do I have a second? Are there any changes to those minutes or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. Moving on to committee reports. We'll start with police and public safety.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. The Police and Public Safety Committee met on May 2 at 3:30. For fleet and equipment, Chief Koshin stated that there are decommissioned equipment that's no longer in service and also recovered bicycles that the department needs to surplus. For building, we discussed the fencing and wall around the rear of the police department, and Chief Koshin stated this will be completed depending on budget priorities. For training, we have Officer Brett Robinson attended instructor development course on the 13th through the 24th. We conducted a department-wide spring range training, that's the 31st till the 1st, and we are completing training units on anti-bias policing and the LGBTQ community through the Police One Academy. Under citizen correspondence, we had a new correspondence from Christian Larson. He was concerned over commercial trucks in the Birchwood School Zone area and also the need for sidewalks for pedestrian traffic. We also put this on the Complete Streets Committee agenda. We asked them to put it on their agenda, and Chief Koshin went over a traffic study, and our community and traffic engagement unit will be watching and assessing and following up if they see any weight-restricted trucks on that road, and also will be following up with Complete Streets regarding the sidewalks for pedestrian safety. For town events, we had Coffee with the Cop at the Senior Center continuing the third Tuesday monthly. We also had one that was run by Sergeant Relation at our Target in Niskiuna on the 17th. The Pedal Paddle Run was on the 11th, Niskiuna Day was on the 18th, and Chief Koshin had reminded residents about traffic concerns due to the parade route. For the Town Clerk, Town Clerk Martinelli stated that she is currently in the process of reviewing retention policy and has met with Deputy Town Supervisor Drescher, Deputy Town Attorney Assini, and Seth Goldstein regarding retention policy. Chief Koshin stated that there's been an increase in dog control calls recently. He also said he has seen an increase in the use of the dog park, and as a committee, we discussed establishing maximum number of permits issued with town residents prioritized based on established limits. Under the school district, we continue talking about the school speed zones and looking at that and reassessing those. The Cops and Kid Reading Program is continuing. Hillside is our host school for May. Under personnel, we have the permanent appointment of Sergeant Brandon Mora and Officer Michael Tomzone. Chief Koshin spoke to the exemplary work of both Sergeant Mora and Officer Tomzone, and that he fully recommends their permanent appointment. We're also voting to appoint two police officers tonight, Kayla Mabo and Rebecca Alex for the academy. In other news, we also had our first department award since 2009. Fifteen department members were recognized. They were nominated by their peers. This was a great event, a lot of us went to it, and we also have a resolution to recognize those awards tonight. We also, as a committee, discussed collaborating on potential national night out event ideas and partners and people who might want to be included in that on August 6. So tonight for resolutions, we have five resolutions. Appointment of two police officers, a permanent appointment of Police Sergeant Mora, permanent appointment of Police Officer Tomzone. We have the ceremonial resolution for our awards, and we're also accepting a DCJS grant in the amount of $196,000 or $519. Sorry, $196,519. And we will be meeting again on June 6 at 3:30 for anyone who wants to join us.
Thank you, Councilmember Brennan. Moving on to water sewer and engineering.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. The Water Sewer and Engineering Committee met earlier this month on May 1st, and I always like to begin my reports with a quick update on wastewater treatment. While we continue to accept fats, oils, and greases often on our spot at our plant, we've also been working with D E C for approval to accept other type of waste. And this is all in an effort to increase our methane production and eventually make the plant a net-zero facility. At the water treatment plant, the upgrade project there is mostly complete, and our crews are just doing some internal construction to wrap up finishing touches that are still left. Also at the water treatment plant, our annual water quality report was recently sent to the State Department of Health for review, and as soon as we receive the report back from DOH, it will be posted on the town's website for residents to review also. Hydrant flushing is continuing throughout the town. A schedule by zone, as well as a map and a list of which streets are in which zone, can be found on the town's website. Water may appear to be discolored during the hydrant flushing process, and while it is safe to consume, clothes laundering is not recommended. Most zones have been completed, we only have two left. That's Zones 7 and 8, which are the neighborhoods bordering the city of Schenectady, and those will probably be flushed towards the end of summer, but an announcement will come out prior to that. Regarding utility bills, new bills were mailed to residents last week. The new bills included some additional information on the bill itself, as well as a letter from the supervisor, the comptroller, and the water and sewer superintendent explaining the recent changes. Bills are due on July 19, after which point any unpaid balances will be levied on next year's tax bills. And I encourage anyone with questions to contact the Water Department. On the topic of water usage, I would like to remind our residents of our sprinkler regulations, which have been in effect for many, many years, and are enforced every year beginning on May 1. Regular lawn and garden watering is permitted from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and sprinkler systems that are on timers should be operated between 4:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. Sprinkling should occur on odd or even days based on your house number and the date, and exceptions for newly planted lawns and gardens can be granted by calling the Water Department. As far as resolutions this evening, we'll be voting to permanently appoint a wastewater treatment plant trainee, as well as the appointment of two maintenance workers, and we will be voting to accept the corporate utility rent reconciliation for the fourth quarter of last year. Our committee meets on the first Wednesday of every month, so this, next month rather, we'll be meeting on June 5 at 8:30 upstairs in the Schaefer Room. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, Councilmember Moskowitz. Moving on to highway parks and recreation.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Highway Parks and Recreation met on May 2 here at Town Hall. Highway and Parks, that's led by our Highway Superintendent Ray Smith, reported that we are now doing patching from the winter on some of our roadways. This is with hot patch, not the cold patch, which would be used in the winter. And we're going through the town, patching up the roads necessary. If any residents feel that they have potholes or areas of pavement that they know in their neighborhoods, please contact the Highway Department. We can't see every road in the town, but that's how we get some information from our residents, and we do appreciate that when they do call and let us know. Personnel-wise, we have a tentative hire for a grounds worker, and our crew's been working in the parks. There's a lot of work in our parks, as you would think, in the spring to get our parks ready. All of our pavilions, all our facilities that have bathrooms all have to get unwinterized, if you will, and ready for our season. So I want to thank all the crews for working hard to get that ready for our residents. Our yard waste pickup flyer, I have a copy of that right here. This is available here at Town Hall, gives your section in town where you're at and when you might get your stuff, when you will get your yard waste picked up. Yard waste stickers are available here at Town Hall. Please try to follow the instructions by bagging and tying your yard waste, so it makes it easier for the crews to do their jobs and pick up. Also, our Highway Superintendent reporting on our paving for this year. The first round of paving will be, I'm just going to read this very quickly. Victoria Court, Rose Terrace, Jessica Lane, Warner Road, Barton Place, Becker Street, Gazznerav, Leroy Street, and Ralph Street. Those are the first round of paving. Again, this information is all available on the town website. We also post at the residents' homes so that they have an idea when these paving times will occur, and we put signs out by the edge of the road also. All right, let's see. I don't want to go too long, so I'll try to shorten up a little bit. How's that? Thank you. But I do want to recognize all our employees and crews from the Highway Department and other people that have helped us through sort of a difficult time here at Town Hall. We had trouble finding a cleaning company that would be able to do the type of cleaning that we wanted, so we finally have got a resolution on tonight for that, and I just want to thank all the employees for their job, especially Ron and Charlie, who took it upon, you know, themselves to make sure that Town Hall remained acceptable to the employees and the residents. I also want to thank our Highway Parks crews for the work that they've done. When we have events in town, like the Pedal Paddle Run and Niskiuna, this is extra work that our departments have to take on to get our facilities ready for these events. Pedal Paddle Run takes place down in the bike path. There's a lot of cleaning of the bike path that needs to be taken care of. Any brush, anything that's in the way, has to be made sure that that's ready for that event, and they've done an exceptional job with that every year. Niskiuna Day, same thing. Our crews do an excellent job putting up barricades, getting the stage ready for the parade review, and many other things that happen sort of behind the scenes that people don't recognize. Also, our Police Department does an exceptional job on that day. Just a lot of work goes into having these events that make Niskiuna a great place. So thanks to all the employees for all their efforts in that area. Our Recreation and Community Programs, that's headed by Lori Parretti. Lori reported that summer registrations are very steady. Employment-wise, we had 72 applications. We employ a lot of younger people in our town, college kids and high school kids, to help them run our, help run our rec programs, and that's gone very well. We'll have a resolution tonight about some hires there, so excellent job in that department. Spring soccer update, everything is looking good. Our fields are looking good for that. The driving range opened on the 30th. Lessons, Ron and Charlie are getting that facility ready. We've got some people that are putting a new pollinator garden in near our rec center and our pool. We want to thank them for doing that. We also have compost bins at the rec center. They will be in place for residents that maybe they don't have a compost bin at their residence. They want to compost their waste. They can do that now at our rec center off Aqueduct Road. We have some resolutions, as I said, for employees for the pool and playground, driving range, and independent contractors. Senior Programs, our senior center is located there at our rec center, and I encourage anybody who is not familiar with it to look up their information on our website and the calendar that they also post on the website and Facebook. They have a lot of activities going on. Exercise programs, sewing programs for needy children, just too many things really to mention. They also have hearing checks down there, blood pressure clinics, all kinds of things. They've got pickleball. Again, many, many things at our senior center for seniors. They also have a moms group there, and again, it just goes on and on. So that's all I have to report. The next meeting is June 6 at 8:00 a.m.
Thank you, Councilmember McPartlin. All right, moving on to Economic Development, Historic Preservation, and Environmental Conservation Committee.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Niskiuna. As you know, we meet on the first Friday of every month. Our next meeting will be June 7, and that is at 8:30 right here at Town Hall. We had another great Arbor Day a couple weeks ago, giving away over 400 trees, making Niskiuna that much greener. And as always, I need to give a huge thanks to the Tree Council and to Carol Carey. 400 trees is quite a bit. They'll be planted, and that truly is a breath of fresh air for our town. The Comprehensive Plant Committee is moving forward. They had a table at the Niskiuna Day, and they spoke with quite a few residents, spoke with the residents about what they want protected and what changes they wanted to make, and that is wrapping up soon. So if you haven't looked at the survey on our Niskiuna Town website, please do that, and please make any recommendations that you see fit regarding the parks, the roads, anything that we have here in the town that you want to see protected or changed. Also, I would note that there's a lot going on in the town of Niskiuna, especially with GE. There's been a new building approved with momentum, and there's just billions of dollars pouring into this area between GE, between Malta, and between the city of Schenectady. This is really becoming an economic boom, and it's great to see Niskiuna take advantage of that. The jobs, they're really good jobs, and they're here for quite some time. This is an industry that's not going away, certainly not a fad. So that is really a good thing to see, and we hope to see all of you at our next Economic Development Meeting on June 7 at 8:30 here at Town Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De La Rata. Okay, so again, I want to welcome you to our meeting tonight. I have a few remarks to provide. I'll start with the utility bill update. As Councilmember Moskowitz stated, we made good on our promise to send a duplicate of your spring utility bill with a new extended due date and a letter of explanation to address questions and concerns. The utility bills are now due on July 19. We hope you received it, and if you didn't, we are encouraging you to see Police Chief Matt Yedo, our Superintendent of Water and Sewer after the meeting. He is here tonight. Again, we appreciate your continued patience. We understand that change is not easy, especially when it impacts your budget. My budget as well, I'm a resident here. These were tough but necessary decisions, and as I have said before, it's worth repeating. It was important that we all understand it was the right thing to do. I know it's not popular, but I ran for this office to make Niskiuna better, and that includes strengthening town finances and providing the quality services our residents expect and deserve. That's what I have done. I'm fixing something that was broken. This is the solution that's needed now because we are running out of time. As I explained before, our water and sewer services have been running serious and deep deficits since 2018, and the town has been depleting the water and sewer fund balances to cover these deficits well before I took office. We're no longer kicking the can down the road. We are implementing a solution to fix the problem. My administration walked into this situation unaware, and once we discovered the situation, we took action. This puts us on a path that is healthy and sustainable. Water infrastructure is a very important concern for all municipalities locally. We had a water main break on Plum Street just last week, which necessitated repairs on Plum Street and Van Antwerp. Our team worked diligently to repair this quickly, and the county issued a boil water advisory as a precaution. Some of you may have noted in the news that there are other municipalities who also had water main breaks over this past week. The town of Colony and the town of Troy also experienced similar issues and had boil water advisories. I think this exemplifies the need for us to continue to invest in our water and sewer infrastructure. We have aging infrastructure that needs repairs, and addressing these issues is very important. Now, police and public safety. It's something that is near and dear to my heart, and we're continuing to diversify and strengthen our police department ranks. As Councilmember Brennan explained, we are hiring two new female officers, and that will bring our total in our department to 30. I'm very excited to bring on these new officers. I participated in their interviews, and they both were highly qualified, intelligent, thoughtful candidates, and I'm very excited to continue building our ranks with high-quality candidates. So I also want to report on our Traffic Safety Division. Their increased patrols and vigilance on Route 7 is evident. The data from January 2024 shows this impact. Total stops to date, 2,272, and total tickets issued, 1,427. 58% of those tickets were issued on Route 7. That's 832 tickets total. It's a significant impact and a significant increase since I've taken office. I want to thank those officers for their diligent patrols over Memorial Day weekend. I was traveling on Route 7 at some point. I did not see an officer posted. I promptly texted Chief Koshin, and he said, "Don't worry, they're on it." And on my way back from the errand I was running, there were police officers right outside our most problematic area, and the traffic was slowing down. So thank you, team, for doing that, and thank you for your hard work over this holiday weekend. It showed. We have new data from our bus patrol. It illustrates the effectiveness of this collaboration between the town and the school district. You may remember that cameras on school buses are capturing and transmitting video evidence of cars that pass stop school buses. These videos are reviewed and tickets are issued. To date, we have 475 issued tickets. So please stop passing school buses, everyone, because if you do, you will be ticketed.
How many tickets?
475 to date, and the bulk of those are happening on Route 7. So beware, we're on it. Quality of life. I am very happy to report the transfer of Mohawk State Park is official. Paperwork has been signed, it has been submitted to the state, and it's a go. This parkland officially belongs to Niskiuna. When I became Town Supervisor two and a half years ago, I prioritized working with Assembly Member Steck to acquire this land so we could make it more accessible and improve the trails. In less than two years, we made it happen. It was a team effort. I'd like to thank Superintendent of Highway Parks and Recreation, Highway Parks and Transportation, Ray Smith for working with me on this, as well as Councilmember McPartlin and Councilmember De La Rata. Thank you for the teamwork. Your insight and efforts were appreciated. So we'll be holding a special joint announcement with State Parks and a trail cleaning event that was co-organized with Ecos and Friends of Niskiuna Trails, as well as Jean Fode, our Assistant Director of Community Programs. This event will be on Saturday, June 1 at 10:00 a.m., and the public is encouraged to attend. We are continuing to make improvements at River Road Park. These are grant-funded improvements. The Parks Department folks installed new drainage where the new playground, pavilion, and the location of the new splash pad. It's going to help alleviate some of that water pooling issue, and it has made that area usable, and so we're really excited. The park, the inclusive playground, is open, and residents are already using it. We're in the process of ordering new furniture for the pavilion, so that will be able to be rented out, and it's going to be overall a great space. The parking lot is under construction, and the team in the Parks Department, again, is working diligently. They're completing this project by mid-June. Again, this is grant-funded projects, and it's had about a year and a half turnaround, so it's unprecedented. The amount of work our team has done, and we are using our grant funds wisely and quickly. And finally, the infrastructure for the new splash pad, it is moving forward. Again, in less than a year, we will be breaking ground. We awarded a contract for the installation of the sewer line, and we anticipate that ground will be broken next month. We are also working on the RFP to award the contract for the water infrastructure installation, and we hope to have that contract awarded next month. I gave the team very strict, very tight deadlines. I'm hoping we can have the splash pad open by the end of August. It'll be a challenge, but I think they're up for it, and we're making great progress. Again, I'd like to get our grant projects turned around in at least a year, if not two years, because we want to put that money to good use, and those funds came through our partnership with Assembly Member Phil Steck. Other awesome upgrades to parks. We have the boat launch at the town's portion of Lock 7. If you don't know about it, it's a great place to launch your kayak or go fishing. The Town Hall greens are looking really good, thanks to our Parks Department, and we will also have the Girl Scout Troop 5022 from Rosendale Elementary School planting flowers at Town Hall this Thursday. And it's just in time for our 2024 concert series, which will begin on June 6. The Niskiuna Middle School, Middle and High School Jazz Bands will be playing. I'm also happy to share thanks to our town planner, Laura Robertson. She helped organize a Bike-A-Palooza. I'm a '90s kid, so I love the name. Good work on that. It's on June 15, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Planning for Places is donating helmets for anyone who needs them while supplies last, so there will be free bike helmets. You can bring your bike to Town Hall, and the Mountain Biking Club will give it a free tune-up. There will be free pizza from Uncle Rico's, my favorite, ice cream from Stewart's, also while supplies last. There will be a biking loop to try out, and for younger kids, you can follow a police officer around a mini-loop near Town Hall on Orchard Park. And for our more adventurous bikers, there's a larger guided loop to Blatnik Park, and that will be along the Mohawk Hudson Bike Hike Loop to Blatnik Park and along the Mohawk Hudson Bike Hike Trail by GE, so you can learn about and utilize the new push-button crosswalks that were installed last year, grant-funded, thanks to the county. And this event will be rain or shine. Let's hope for shine. Finally, good governance. I want to point out that in January of this year, it became clear the town needed a more organized policy for how residents are appointed to town boards and key committees. Town Board Member Moskowitz brought it to our attention. I agreed, and so did the Town Board. So I directed our Deputy Supervisor Joe Drescher as the Chair for this ad hoc committee to study the issue and make policy recommendations, and in incredible timeline, four months, he got the job done. So issue identified, solution proposed, and Joe will be speaking to that now. Go for that, Joe.
All right, thank you, Madam Supervisor. So the committee and I met four times since the beginning of March, plus we exchanged several emails. So I want to thank the committee. It was myself, McPartlin, Eric Omburger, or Robertson, and Councilman Moskowitz attended the first meeting. When this got brought to my attention, I looked first at state law and the town code. I'm an attorney by trade, so that was the first place I looked, and we didn't have a policy on our town code, and state law didn't have a policy, and the previous administration didn't have a policy. So we took it upon ourselves to meet, have thoughtful and thorough discussion, and come up with a tentative plan that we hope to, we presented to the board, and we hope to have implemented for a one-year trial run. And if it works, then we can codify it. We'd rather test it out, see if there needs to be any revisions or modifications as we do it. do it. And then, once it's solidified, codify it, because it'd be much harder to codify than change, rather than do a one-year run and then change. But the long and the short of it is, we would have a policy in place to keep a ruling section for applications and open positions, board positions, such as like the planning board, on the town website. So residents can know what is open and they can apply. And we would keep resumes on file, or applications, if you will, on file. And as positions maybe become open during the year, we could identify what is open, who has applied, have new people apply, present to the board, present to the supervisor, so we can fill positions along the way. And then we also came up with a policy for, at the end of the year, dealing with current positions that are expiring, seeing who wants to stay in their position, who doesn't want to stay, and essentially filling those roles as well. So we kind of did it in a piecemeal of throughout the year and then at the end of the year. So that's something that, it's my understanding, the board and supervisor will be looking over and if it's approved, we'll do a one-year run and then hopefully codify it once it shows its merit. And that's it. I thank everyone again.
Yeah, thank you so much for your hard work on that. I appreciate it. And I just want to conclude by saying, this is our town board meeting in May and June is Pride Month. So I will be putting forward a resolution to acknowledge June as the official Pride Month in Niskiuna. And starting June 1st, we will begin flying the pride flag for the first time ever in our town. So I invite you all to come back to our, we will probably be having a special meeting in two weeks and we will be voting on that resolution then. All right. So that's all I have for my remarks and we will move on to privilege of the floor. I'd like to remind everyone, we have a three-minute recommendation, so please stick to those rules in thinking of everyone's time. And Town Clerk Martinelli will call individuals to the podium who have signed up. And if you have not signed up, of course you may come to the podium. And Town Clerk Martinelli will also be helping to identify the time limit. So thank you for adhering to those guidelines. Thank you.
Beth Jacobs.
So having only three minutes, I'm going to ask that you not make comments until I'm done. This is not what brought me here, but I'm going to mention it again. If you're going to mention Native Americans, and I know it's meant to be nice, the idea is that you get their permission first from the local tribe or the tribe so mentioned and that also there is a suggestion that a small donation be made to said tribe. I'm now reminding you again, the New York State Regents is requiring schools to remove any sort of Native American names. But I'm also going to go on to the concept of religion in government. A few months back, I noticed that there was a commentary made, a sort of an excited utterance, a common religious phrase, and it's not supposed to be happening in governmental meetings. The reminder is that so that everybody feel welcome and if you not happen to be a member of that religion, you don't feel left out. And the other way to think of it is if, you know, someone who was Buddhist were to make a Buddhist prayer or commentary during a religious, during a governmental meeting, how would you feel? All right. So then we're going to go on to, these are not the reasons I came, but I'm going to mention them because I will not be back for a while. During a board vote several months back, there was a comment made about a certain person's educational level. Again, I do not see what that has to do with that particular board vote or qualifications to be on the board when 62% of Americans don't have a college education and may not have attended college at all. And I'm going to throw this in as a sort of humorous reminder. I have a relative whose IQ is higher than Einstein, a first-degree relative, and I assure you that she believes that she should be running the government and is more qualified than any of you on this board. But the reason I really came here today is the water issue. Now, it may not seem so consequential to you guys, but once you're on a fixed income and the little old lady so mentioned frequently here in the comments, where are you going to get the money for the double water bill? Our water bill doubled and it is, you know, I have relatives in California, these are big city water rates that you have put forward. And I assure you, they turn on the tap in California. My relatives have lived out there for generations and the most recent ones, the least amount of time is myself, at three years. And the water main breaks on Van Antje Road, you know, you mentioned that, but we lost water for more than 12 hours and the town didn't see fit to put water out for us. My 82-year-old mother went to her Mazda North America Award-winning outreach program in the inner city, in the slums, so she could use the toilet and wash her hands. So you may think that it's inconsequential to double the water rates, but there's a growing problem in this country of elderly becoming homeless.
Wrap it up, that's three minutes.
And I don't see any public housing in this area. And once you reach 62 or 63, many people are trying to buy themselves security. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have Stefan.
Good evening, all. Back here again to talk about the water rate. I got the new bill. I appreciate that was extended to July. However, it still is not going to solve the problem that a lot of us, residents, are facing financially. You're just going to send another bill out about the same amount in three months after that. What does that do for us? It just still sets us back. I still don't have a good feeling about how, I understand why you did it, but I don't understand why you did it the way you did. Some of the slides that were displayed showed all the expenses. He didn't show the revenues. I want to know what the revenue is from this Sewer District 1. I'm in Sewer District 1. Sewer District 1 seems to be hit the hardest from most people in Niskiuna. I looked at my bill alone. Had I been in Sewer District 6, I'd be paying $100 less. I understand it pumps it through Schenectady. I don't know why you didn't try to take an even, flat rate. We're all in Niskiuna. We talk about us being one community, but you've divided us between Sewer District 1 and Sewer District 6 with two different rates that really lay into it. I disagree with when you want to constantly deflect things to prior administrations, because prior administrations, the deficits weren't as bad. They were, they were, some of them in the red, but not as bad as they were the last couple of years. I noticed that from 2018 to 2023, Sewer District 1, oh, sorry, from 2018 to 2022, Sewer District 1, where I reside, had a profit of $242,000. I won't call profit, but in a plus side, in the black, $242,000. However, Sewer District 6 was in the red, $717,000. I didn't, I'm not looking at including 2023, because the numbers that were displayed in some of the slides were really much, much higher, because I don't think you collected anything last year. Because I remember, I was surprised, I didn't see a sewer bill last year. So now you're throwing it out this year. I expected my bill to be about $680 for the year. This year, it's going to be close to $1,000, because the way all the numbers have been readjusted. At the last board meeting, which I did miss, Councilman Moskowitz made a proposal that you cancel these bills and reissue another, the new one, until you get an actuary in here to look at different models and present different options and try to raise revenue over a three-to-five-year span, ease the financial burden on all the Niskiuna residents, especially those that are on fixed income. Councilmember McPartlin made a very valid comment, some people have already paid their bills. I respected that. However, you could have kept this bill, leave them out there right now, but the one that's going to come out in November, I recommend we cancel that bill and go back to the old building until you get an actuary in here and figure out how to increase the rates over three to five years. The biggest question I have too is, if we were running in the red, I don't know why you went through and had to change all the variable figures. If the water figures were always in the red, why didn't you just raise the rate?
Thank you, sir.
Sewer District 6.
That's three minutes, thank you.
Sewer District 6, one more point. Sewer District 6 was operating in the red almost $250,000 to $300,000 every single year. Why didn't you just raise the rates? Sewer District 1, where I am, we were in the black every single year.
Thank you.
I want to know what the revenues are that you're expecting from Sewer District 1.
I'm going to call the next person now.
What the revenues are for Sewer District 1 versus the revenues for Sewer District 6. There's still a lot of unanswered questions here that I think people want answers to.
Joe.
Thank you. I provided a two-page handout to the board members a little while ago and I know I'm not great with time, so please bear with me. So what I wanted to present to you was Sewer District 6 and Sewer District 1, side-by-side comparison from 2022 to 2024. And this, I know there's a lot of numbers here and it can make your eyes glaze over, but I'll get to the bottom line very quickly with it. The top columns show you what the water and sewer property taxes are for each year for 2022, 2023, and 2024. And then I've given you another breakout for minimum use, that's a user that's using somewhere around 9,000 gallons of water. An average user, who the comptroller told us is, in the town, is, you know, $27,377 every six months. And a high user, which is about 60,000 gallons. And what I did was I ran this out, these are actual numbers. This is not me conject, it's not conjecture speculation. This is based on the actual rate designs. So if you go to the bottom of the page, this is the bottom line. When you look at the total annual costs for a minimum user in 2022, before the rate design changed and the property taxes were changed, it was $562 for your combined taxes. This year, for that same person, a minimum user, it's $677. That's an increase of $114. For a average user, and I'm an average user, I use about 28,000 gallons. My bill went from 709 to 928, it's up over $220. And a high user, their bill went from just over $1,000 to almost $1,500. It's a $400 increase. And if you flip the page to District 1, to the gentleman's point, their rates are higher and their rates are higher because some of the inputs to the rate design changed significantly for them as well, including the basic cost. But when you look at the bottom line for Sewer District 1, an average user in 2022 was $689, it's now $907, it's up $218. So this is the kind of analysis that you should have looked at prior to making decisions. Now, this is only twofold, because I'm only showing you the residential, but there's also a commercial aspect to this and you'd have to run the same type of analysis with the minimum user, an average user, and a higher-end user. And what you're going to see when you do this, I've already run the numbers, but you're going to see that you have rate increases that are in many hundreds and hundreds of dollars. And I'm just going to wrap up in a minute, but I'd like to put Councilmember De La Rada on the spot for just a minute, in a good way. Aside from Mr. Moskowitz, you're the only council member that at least two board meetings that I've been to has said that it was never the intent of this board to vote for a rate increase that was going to be $400 to $600, and I applaud you for that. You were told that the rate increase is going to be about $50 or $60. And indeed, if you look at the minimum use for Sewer District 1 user, it's about $50. But it deviates significantly because the rate design changed so catastrophically. And the point that I want to make to you on this is that...
If you can wrap up your comment.
Yes. A minimum user in the town is only about 20% of the users, based on the information. So the other 80% of the users in the town are above minimum use, meaning their bills are going to go beyond that $50 or $60. In some cases, it's $680, $900. So you said that if that was true, you think that we should stop the clock, turn back, and do something to fix it. I'm asking you, sir, to get together with Councilmember Moskowitz and despite what other board members are saying to you, do the right thing. Re-look at this, stop the clock, have the comptroller run my spreadsheet, run the numbers, and you're going to see...
Okay, thank you, sir.
What I'm telling you is accurate and you can do everyone in the town a big service by adjusting these bills to something that would be more reasonable. Thank you.
Does anyone else like to speak? You can come to the podium.
Good evening. Mike Casella, Rosendale Road, a lifelong resident, retired firefighter, pretty aware of public safety. I've served that capacity. Couple of years ago, the town asked for input regarding a new police chief. I was happy to do that. I wrote a letter in support of Chief Koshin. I'm not here because I'm his friend, I'm here because I'm a taxpayer, I'm a concerned citizen. There was a ceremony a few weeks ago honoring some very fine police work, but we missed one person, Chief Koshin. He's turned this department around, and that's not my opinion. I'm friendly with many of the people on the job, many people that retired from the job and many people around the community that are involved in law enforcement. He's done a tremendous job and I think he needs to be recognized as such. And I think a standing round of applause at this moment would be appropriate. Good night.
My name is Marina Franchild and I live on Dean Street. You all know everybody's upset and I'm not going to talk about being upset, because you all know that, but something really bothers me. There's, and I don't know a polite way to say this, so bear with me, there's too much self-congratulations going on, on this board. We did great, we're not kicking the can down the road, look at us, look at us. I run a small business for the person I live with. I know when her ins and her outs don't match. I know how to do projections and I'm not a comptroller or anything like that, but I know how to do this common economic sense. I find it hard to understand why there's no accountability. I don't hear any accountability. I really don't. It's not enough to say, "Oh, we discovered that something was wrong." How did that escape detection for so long? You know? If it wasn't the people that are here now, what about checks and balances and the people that preceded? This makes absolutely no sense to me. When the town board turns over, it's not like everybody leaves and all new people come in, it's staggered. There is something wrong with the way that Niskiuna government is being run. I'm a lifelong Democrat, I voted for a lot of people that are on the board right now, but I'm not happy, because I don't see accountability, I don't see transparency, I don't see care for me. There's supposed to be concern like for DEI in this community. Well, you know what? Classism is something that should be considered. Some people are on fixed incomes. I'm lucky I have some savings, even though I'm now on a pretty limited budget. But other people don't have savings. They were not an engineer in their past life and they're eating cat food and they live in Niskiuna. And it really angers me that there's not more concern. So it's not good enough to say that, you know, we're not kicking, you know, we're remedying what went wrong. You should find out who was accountable, hold them accountable, and come up with some sort of a solution that addresses everybody's needs. It's not enough. There is a lack of accountability and there's self-congratulations going on. This is, no one is applauding you. No one is happy about what you did. Nobody is happy with the board, most of the board right now, except for a couple of people on it. No one is happy in the town. You're losing votes, you probably won't get reelected. People are angry because, you know why? Because you don't care. I have 28 seconds left. Because you don't care about them. I don't have a feeling that you care about me. People that I know that are poor, they don't have a feeling that you care about them. Where's the caring? Where's the caring? I don't see any caring. People that run beauty salons are probably going to have to close. From a fiscal responsibility point of view, you're going to lose businesses. How come you didn't think about that? What about restaurants? They're going to have to close. How come you didn't think about that? You need an audit. And the last thing that I'm going to say was, there was an audit by the New York State Comptroller, Denapoli, and it was about how accounts receivable weren't being handled properly. I'm sure that when Sylvester was here, that he made sure that he had the eyes of a hawk and made sure that nothing went wrong after that. So how can you tell me that this eluded detection? This is a cover-up, as far as I'm concerned, and you need to be accountable and people are going to get to the bottom of it.
Haney Santana, 815 Nottingham Drive. I just have to say this concerning the prior administration, Yasmin Sayed. She left a fund balance for the water department, it was over $4 million. What happened to the money, people? You came in, you used it. What did you use it for? And as for voting for a raise, none of you should get a raise. You all should return the money back to the town, because you're not, you're not earning it. You are wasting our time, wasting our hard-earned money, and you really don't care about seniors. You hate us. You hate... about seniors. You hate us. You hate poor people. You hate people that don't look and sound like you. And as for you, McPartlin, you asked Yasmin Syed to give herself a raise. She told you no, many times. So please don't try to bash her name in any way. She's not here. But she left a fund balance. There's Matt Yedo. $4 million in the water department. Where's the money? Where's the money? Where's the money? That's the question tonight.
Good evening. My name's Keith Money. I live at Sixth Troy Place. Although I'm not here to speak about my bill, I also happen to be the treasurer of the American Legion Post 1099 on Union Street. For those who don't know, we're the last physical post in Schenectady County. And I'm here to ask whether there's anything that the town can do, is willing to do, to help us with the onerous increase that we've seen. I've talked to numerous people, you know, and my own bill, you know, went up about 200%. A lot of people say, well, you know, theirs is up 50%. Some I've heard, three times, four times. Our bill is up 2,700%. We were paying, over the last six years, an average of $66.36 every year. Our new bill is going to come out, because of the new minimums that we're being hit with, at $1,864. Again, a 27x increase. That represents more than a quarter of the income that our post derives from our main source of revenue, which is our Saturday morning breakfast. I'm not here to debate the increase or any of that. I'm asking, this is a financial burden that just is, I can't wrap my head around it. I'm sorry. I can't even come up with adjectives to describe this. I am asking for the attention of somebody in the town to see whether anything can be done about this. If the answer in the end is no, you know, that's where we will have to deal. But I would think that something can be done, because I mean, I don't see how this is reasonable in any sense of the word. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Lynda Rizzo, 2229 Fairlawn Parkway. I want to piggyback on what some people said. On Friday, I had an opportunity to speak with Joe Landry, and we were talking about the water fiasco, the sewer bill here, the fees, the fees going up. And he assured me that when he left office, at the end of 2017, going into 2018, there was no deficit in any part of the budget, and in fact, there were very, very, very healthy fund balances. Also, Yasmin Syed was contacted, and she also said the same thing, that she did not leave this town in a disastrous state with the budget, with deficits, and that the fund balances were very healthy. So my question is, in reality, when did these deficits actually occur? Because if you had a high deficit in the water and sewer departments, and one in six, and that was noticed in 2022, why was it let go till 2024? I mean, I talked to someone who's a CP, he's an accountant, CPA, and he said, if you're really going to devise a new rate schedule and all, you can do that in two weeks. It doesn't take two years. So we have two former supervisors who have said they did not leave this town in a disastrous state. I have to ask, who do we believe? Personally, I believe Joe Landry, who certainly knew budgets. He was an engineer, and he was an attorney. And I also believe Yasmin. My last point is, businesses are going to leave Niskuna. Sorry, they are. They can't afford this. We are a bedroom community, small. We cannot absorb a deluxe government on the taxpayers' backs. We can't do that anymore with inflation. One business today, I found out, was paying $50 every six months. They're now paying $1,000. Do you think new businesses are going to come in here? No, they're going to go to the city of Schenectady, where they're not being taxed to death for their water, and where the water is good quality. I used to live there. So I don't know if you're going to do anything. I really doubt it. I think it's going to stay exactly where it is, and I agree with the resident that got up and said, you won't get reelected. And you know what? You won't. Goodbye.
Hi. My name's Nora Galto. I reside in District, Sewer District Sakatumi Number One, and for 40 years, I've been there. And what I'm seeing, I'm thanking you for the letter that came 18 months too late, but I have to believe you guys knew where this was headed. You chose to hang on to minimum levels instead of getting up there where the rest of the world is, where we are in the average, and not illustrating what happens to the average person, not the minimum user, the average user. And you would see, if you'd shared it with us, you would have gotten all this flack early on. It would have been dealt with. Resolutions would have been made. Solutions might have, but I'm beating the dead horse, because the communication is agreed was sucky, was horrible. And so that is improving, we hope. Anyway, there was an audit done by OSC in 2017 with a lot of municipalities, 161 municipalities got audited. And there were a lot of highlights in those audits that said there were issues, deficiencies with municipality water systems. And one of those that I'm saying, have we examined that? We may have. I don't know. Is that you've got this water production over here, and you've got this consumption over here? Are they being reconciled? If they're not being reconciled, then the water that's headed for us is being deviated to maybe a broken main, poor infrastructure. But the bill is being passed on in either a higher consumer price fee or a deficit. So I'm just asking, if that kind of reconciliation is going on, then fine, but I don't know. The deficits are the big question mark. Where is this happening? Nobody knows the picture out here. You may know it, but you're not sharing it. And that's what we're asking for, is just to give us some information. You had a model, David Ramsey, great model. Use that model. You want higher fees, then you cut over here. To get that safety net that you're talking about, you need to subtract something over here with tax, property taxes, reduce those, some kind of give back you want to take, but you don't want to give anything. And that's what I'm asking, is a total picture. There's a lot of nice, but not necessary going on, and it should be an austerity budget. Raises, forget it. Take it off the table. Do your little study and say, okay, but we're not doing this. It's an insult to everybody who's hammered with these increases. And then you guys want to see if you deserve an increase. That's it. I'm with everybody else, and I feel sorry for those that are on fixed incomes, because it's not workable.
Leslie Gold. I have a very different topic in mind. Arbor Day was also the town DEA-sponsored Take Back the Drugs Day. And in addition to that, for unused medication, the town has drop boxes. And if you're suddenly stuck with having to dispose of a loved one's medications that unfortunately they're not going to need anymore, it's very convenient to have that in town. And hardly any of the drugstores do a take-back. I recently discovered that the market I go to mostly does have that, and I was shocked, because I had never known it was there. Maybe it's a new installation. In my mind, the drugstores should have to deal with it, but since they don't, it's great that the town does. But related to that is the problem of disposing of Sharps. The town does not have a program for that. I'm wondering if the town could develop one. I don't know if it's feasible or not. It's a bona fide request. But currently, if you need to get rid of Sharps, you have to contact a local health facility, and they seem to pretty much all be in the same mindset. They will grudgingly take them. They tell you what hours their program is available, and you have to get there and meet their conditions. Not convenient. So that would be a lovely service for the town to offer. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other residents here to speak during privilege of the floor? Then we will move on to resolutions, and we'll start with our ceremonial resolution 2024-148, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan.
A resolution recognizing and honoring members of the Niskuna Police Department for their exemplary work and dedication.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
So I was present at the ceremony that we had for our police officers, recognizing them for some, just some of the things that they have done in our town. And it just speaks to the character of all the officers and the entire department, from the chief right on down, how excellent of a department that we have. And I won't go into the details of, you know, some of the incidents that our officers have to deal with in our town. But let me just say this, that some of them are not very easy incidents. They're very difficult incidents. And our officers have been trained, and they take their training and their jobs very seriously. And everyone in the town in Niskuna should be proud of the police department that we have, because they are doing an excellent job, an excellent job for all our residents, for everyone.
Yeah. I'll add to that. It was a beautiful, beautiful ceremony, and everyone is going above and beyond. And I, for those who weren't there, a common theme that kept getting repeated when people talked and people shared was the kindness and compassion that they were showing the person who was struggling, the person who was having a mental health crisis, the person who was in a crisis, the person who was not making a great decision, a person who was not maybe safe. The care and compassion and the perspective-taking that was happening naturally through the process was just amazing to hear, and it was, felt really good to live in a town where people are that thoughtful, and those are the people who are protecting us. So, thank you.
I was also on the board last Friday, and to hear the stories about being in our office space every day, coupled with the skill and dedication, talent, I love it. I'm a police family, still hearing these stories, but I mean, so congratulations to everybody on the board last Friday. Congratulations to the fire department for its week. I think the town is very safe.
As a county public defender, and a kind of a key player in the criminal justice system here in Schenectady County, I'm very aware of what police in general go through and the problems and difficulties that are presented with them every day. And I must say that the Niskuna Police Department is definitely one of the best departments I think we have in Schenectady County, and it's an apartment I'm very proud of. So thank you.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Dolorada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Okay. Starting at the top, we'll move on to Resolution 2024-129, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution permanently appointing a police officer.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Dolorada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-130, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution permanently appointing a person to a police sergeant.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Dolorada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-131, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution hiring police officers in the Niskuna Police Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Dolorada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. I'd like to invite Rebecca to come forward and be sworn in, and then we'll swear a key. Thanks. Thank you. Okay. Place your right hand, left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Rebecca Alex.
Do solemnly swear--
Do solemnly swear.
--to uphold the Constitution of the United States--
Uphold the Constitution of the United States.
--and the Constitution of the State of New York--
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
--and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
Faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
So help me God.
So help me God.
According, and congratulations. Right hand on the Bible. Raise your left hand. I state your name.
I, Kayla Meebo.
Do solemnly swear--
Do solemnly swear.
--to uphold the Constitution of the United States--
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
--and the Constitution of the State of New York--
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
--and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
And I will faithfully discharge the--
Duties of police.
Duties of police officer.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Did you want to say anything?
No, you're good.
Come on. We know you want to say something.
With all due seriousness, we're underselling the work that our department does. The members of our department, every single day, come to work and do incredible work for our community. And to say that we underappreciate them, even though we are appreciative of them, I can't say enough good things about them. We have an incredible department. We have two really exemplary new members that are about to start the academy, and the sky's the limit. I really appreciate the acknowledgement from me personally earlier, but it's without them that I don't stand here in front of you. They're the workers. They're the ones running the machine, and they're doing the great work. So thank you so much. So thank you so much.
All right. Moving on to Resolution number 2024-132, sponsored by Council Moskowitz. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing, permanently appointing a wastewater treatment plant operator training.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-133, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution hiring a seasonal worker in the town's water and sewer department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Supervisor, I'm going to move to table this resolution. It was just brought to my attention a few hours ago that Zoe Harrison, fortunately for us, is unavailable to be appointed to this position. So I move to table it until we can find a other qualified candidate.
Do we need to take a vote on the table?
Needs to be a second on the motion.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote on the amend or the tabling of this resolution. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. The table resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-134, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution accepting grant funds from Division of Criminal Justice Services for technological equipment in the police department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just, this is a very substantial grant that Chief Koshin applied for. We're very excited to get. And it's going to be basically like a force multiplier to be able to have this technology in the hands of our officers. So it's very exciting.
Yep, close to a $200,000 grant. Great work by the team. Okay, no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-135, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to accept a proposal for cleaning services at town's administrative buildings.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-136, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a water and sewer maintenance worker in the town's water and sewer department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-137, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a water and sewer maintenance worker in the town's water and sewer department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-138, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution permanently appointing a maintenance worker in the water and sewer department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-139, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution adopting an amendment to the employee handbook.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-140, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni and Councilmember De La Rada. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to accept a linkage study grant for the Complete Streets Treatments to Route Seven through the Capital Region Transportation Council Unified Planning Work Program.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is a great grant, almost $140,000 that the town only has to match 10% of. So this is really a phenomenal thing that's going to move us forward with the Route Seven corridor. And again, I really want to thank our supervisor as well as our planning department. Everybody's done a really great job in obtaining this grant, including our comptroller. So thank you again. This is, this is going to really jumpstart, hopefully, a safe corridor in town in Niskuna.
Yes. I'd just like to note that the 10% in kind will be coming from work that is conducted by our town planner, as well as volunteers of the Complete Streets Committee. All right, seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-141, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rada. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution proclaiming April 27th, 2024, as Arbor Day in the town in Niskuna.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Over 150 years old and still going strong. That's pretty impressive for the town. Thank you again to Carol Carey. Wonderful.
Yes, and thank you to our town planner, Laura Robertson, who puts in a lot of effort and work to help us maintain our Tree City USA standing. And then also to our highway department, who helps plant those trees throughout the year. So thank you so much, everybody.
Yes, and everyone's involvement on Arbor Day at the celebration that we had here at Town Hall. It's quite an event. You should really come next year. It's, we have a lot of things going on that day. It happened to be, as someone else said, about our Drug Take Back Day. But it was a great event for Arbor Day, lots of booze, free trees. So excellent job by everyone.
All right, seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-142, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing certain budgetary modifications.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-143, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution hiring additional employees and independent contractors in the town's Office of Community Programs.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Supervisor, I'm going to abstain from voting on this resolution. My cousin is among the list of employees being appointed at the town pool. She has been for many, many years, longer than I can remember. Last year, there was some discussion about whether or not me voting on that appointment was an ethical violation. And while it could not be any clearer that there was no violation, I will abstain just to avoid any potential conflict.
Blatant patronage.
Thank you, Lori, for your hard work on this and everyone in your department putting the list together, interviewing the, the people. And as I said before in my committee report, you know, it's, it's a great job for some of our younger people in our town. And we do it every year.
All right, seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Abstain.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.